21, it is now 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we begin our voting order this evening, Tracus, Days, Webb, Clancy, Harder, Dunaway, and Fitch. I would like to have a motion to approve the Journal of the Meeting of June 1, 2021.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The June 1, 2021 Journal is approved. Right now, we will have Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order for the adoption and presentation of a resolution honoring the St. Louis County Police Department's crime scene investigators and crime laboratory professionals for their meritorious service during the investigation of the homicides of Mrs. Barbara Goodkin and Dr. Sergej Zacharoff.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Councilman Fitch.
Please read Resolution Number 2.
Resolution Number 2, this evening introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Days. Resolution, whereas on May 15, 2021, the Major Case Squad of Greater St. Louis and the Brentwood Police Department requested that the St. Louis County Police Department Crime Scene Unit process the scene of a homicide that occurred on the parking lot of a business located at the 8700 block of Eager Road in Brentwood. And whereas, the Crime Scene Unit conducted the homicide scene investigation and recovered multiple bullet shell casings and submitted them to the St. Louis County Police Crime Laboratory Crime Lab for analysis. And whereas, the University City Police Department also investigated a shooting/homicide on Delmar Boulevard that occurred an hour prior to the incident in Brentwood. And whereas, within 24 hours, the Crime Lab was able to positively determine shell casings recovered in the Brentwood and University City homicides were fired by the same weapon, irrefutably linking the two homicides. And whereas, additional investigation by police departments in South Carolina and Tennessee connected a total of five homicides and multiple shootings, including those that occurred in Brentwood and University City, to two individuals who were taken into custody and are awaiting extradition to St. Louis County. And whereas, evidence collected and analyzed by St. Louis County Police Staff will be used in the South Carolina and Tennessee cases. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council expresses its deepest gratitude to and admiration for the St. Louis County Police Department Crime Scene Unit and Crime Lab professionals for their outstanding and expeditious investigative efforts related to these terrible crimes. Section 2, the Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Mary Barton, Superintendent of Police, and the St. Louis County Police Board of Police Commissioners as permanent tokens of the Council's esteem and appreciation.
Thank you, Kevin. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 2, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number 2 is adopted.
Madam Chair, if you mind.
Councilman Fitch.
Would it be okay if I bring the Police Chief and some of her staff members forward to receive? Now, Executive Page, would you join me, please, to help present?
Chair. If all the members were spot on.
Yes, yes.
If you wouldn't mind if you introduce something for us to hear tonight.
Madam Chair, Council, I have with me Sergeant David Small of Crime Scene. I'm the director of the Crime Lab. I have Peter Wilson, the Fire Officer Examiner, that is in charge of the Division of Investigation.
Well, you all did a great job as usual. Yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to Communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number 1.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 3.
Receive and file, the same motion will apply to item number 4, and that will be the order.
Item number 6.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 6, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 7, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 8, 6th District.
Receive, file, the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 9.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply through item number 14.
One moment, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
Item number 15, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 16, 3rd and 6th District.
Receive, file, contract in the amount not to exceed $3,252,984.89 be approved and awarded to M&amp;H Concrete Contractors Incorporated. The lowest response of bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 17, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number 1, 5th District.
Yes, this is a letter that I wrote today to the Director of the Missouri Department of Labor. I would like to get some data from them pertaining to the impact on St. Louis County residents of the state's recent decision to forego federal assistance related to those who have been unemployed by the pandemic. I think this will be useful information as the Council deliberates again soon about how best to spend our federal relief money, and we need to continue to use data to make sure that we're getting dollars to those who need it the most. So I hope we get a timely response. With that, I will receive and file.
So ordered. We are now to the public forum of our meeting. You have the list?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So as your name is called, please come forward and give us your name, first name, last name, and your ZIP code for the record. There should be a timer that will appear up there, so they'll give you an idea of when your three minutes are up. And with that, please call the first speaker.
Madam Chair, we have eight speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Azura Liggins.
Madam Chair, members of the Council, I have a few things to mention this evening. County Executive Page has been criticized recently for his fundraising letter that said Council Republicans were acting like Donald Trump. This had to do with the investigation of his secondary job. This is where Sam Page is at, a little more than two years in the County Executive's office. After he was selected as County Executive, there was a sense of relief. Steve Singer was gone, and it was thought there would be more collaborative effort in county government, but things have continuously gone downhill. Sam Page has more and more resembled Steve Singer. Some say he is worse. County Executive recently made appointments to the MSD Board. As with most things he's done, it was done more to further his political interests than what's best for the people of St. Louis County. Both appointees belong to organizations that supported Sam Page. One is a member of the Laborers Union, the second-largest contributor to the Page campaign. On September 27, 2019, Sam Page asked the County Council to enact a prevailing wage ordinance that requires prevailing wages to be paid for construction projects that receive incentives from the county. The Laborers Union would likely benefit more than anyone else. In four years and 10 months on the County Council, Sam Page never saw the need for such an ordinance, but now he was County Executive, running for election, and needed campaign money, lots of it. At the time, it was widely known Jake Zimmerman would also be running for County Executive. He had $503,000 of campaign funds. Sam Page had only $42,000. It was thought Mark Montevani would also be running and could self-fund his campaign. On October 15, 2019, the County Council gave final approval to the prevailing wage ordinance. On October 24, 2019, Sam Page signed it. On December 27, 2019, exactly 90 days after Sam Page proposed the ordinance, the Laborers Union contributed $50,000 to the Page campaign. On June 26, 2020, the Laborers Union donated an additional $75,000 to the Page campaign. Three days later, the Laborers gave $15,000 more, taking the total to $140,000. The funds were barely needed by the Page campaign in the hotly contested primary race. The Laborers finally contributed $10,000 more on October 2, 2020, taking their total Sam Page contributions to $150,000. Steve Singer may have left the building, his corrupt practices have not. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Our next speaker is Azura Liggins, followed by Greg Porter.
Good evening, Executive Page and the entire County Council. I would first like to thank Chairwoman and my Councilwoman Rita Days for her heartfelt acknowledgement of the 100-year anniversary of the Black Wall Street massacre and for recognizing that meaningful discussion on the issue of racism is a positive pathway forward. Question number 1, why does racism still shape St. Louis County? In my opinion, racism is big business, and the fundamental moral anxiety that racism produces will cause most people to have mental and physical problems. I believe poor health is beneficial to sustaining racism. Racism is alive and well, and to my knowledge, it has never been debated. I followed the reportings of last week's meeting. Not one mention of Chairwoman Days recognizing the need for open discussion on the racism issue. It is our hope that the new leadership will take the county in a new direction. Systemic racism is real, and it is exhausting. If we learn nothing from the Black Wall Street massacre, we had to see how people are traumatized and left to suffer in silence for over 100 years. I too suffer in silence. In 2015, attorney Greg Lemley filed a fraudulent court action against me, accusing me of harassment. 62 years of age, a wife, mother, and grandmother, I have been forced to represent myself. A permanent injunction issued against me with no end date. This order has silenced me, leaving me powerless to correct longstanding disability problems. I am now before the courts on a contempt violation. Imagine, a Fortune 500 company stealing a disabled employee's benefits and money in plain sight, openly committing perjury, and filing false pleadings without any fear of accountability. This should be used as a teaching moment. I am requesting for myself and all others similarly situated that racism become a part of the weekly agenda. This will allow the public to openly participate and follow the progress. Together, we should all stand against racism. Question number 2, I would like to know if any of you, Executive Page or the entire County Council have experienced racism, and if you have, would you please share your story? I have a minute left, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Porter, followed by Jennifer Barker.
Good evening, members of the Council. My name is Greg Porter, ZIP code 63033, 4th District. I'm the President and Secretary of the Padoc Forest Residents Association and the Chairman of the North St. Louis County Problem Solving Committee. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Webb for hosting the recent Town Hall meeting about the redevelopment of Jamestown Mall as a logistics center. Although this proposal is a long way to go before it's brought before the entire Council for a vote, I'm here to report on the results of the recent Problem Solving Committee survey about this proposal. It's probably not any surprise to you that the majority of the responses were opposed to this proposal, so I'm just going to read a few of the responses that I received as follows. This one's from Dr. Jerry Eichholz. "North Point says they are developers of industrial facilities. Who wants an industrial facility in their neighborhood? There currently is a lot of vacant retail space in North County. Who would want additional retail space that in a short time could potentially be sitting empty? If the area needs another logistics center, Hall Street has a lot of vacant formerly logistical-type facilities that could be easily repurposed for such use. The Bilton, Missouri piece showed recreational facilities nearby. Will North Point put in such facilities and maintain them for our community to use? This was a dumb proposal when it was first proposed, and it has not gotten any better. What will the infrastructure maintenance cost be for the 3.7 miles of roads from 270 to the Jamestown location be? Who will foot the bill for the maintenance? Hall Street can't be that much farther from 270, and it's very close to 70, 55, and 44. This proposal is being made for an area because the area is predominantly inhabited by minority families, that big corporations and government believe they can just roll over to get profits and benefits for themselves rather than improving the area and lives of people." Next one's from James Clay. "After reading the newspaper article on the plans for Chesterfield Mall, I once again feel incredibly marginalized and discriminated against as a North County resident. I realize North County isn't Chesterfield demographically or economically. Nevertheless, I think we should be able to negotiate a better result than a logistics center with 7% retail of unknown origin. I, like most residents near Jamestown Mall, am tired of looking at the current plight day in and day out, but I believe we deserve better than the current unimaginable, something is better than normal proposal. Let's push harder for something that will add value, to make us proud to have it in our North County neighborhood." In closing, based on what I've reported, it's very clear that the majority of residents do not want an industrial facility in a residential area, so this proposal needs to be tabled, and a more palatable proposal needs to be brought forth. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Barker, followed by Kelly McGowan.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Barker. I live at 63021. Thank you for being here in person, Dr. Page. We appreciate that. I have a great concern for requests for legislation for the creation of a vaccination incentive program. The American Rescue Plan Act has $192.83 million of federal grant set aside for us in St. Louis County. Lotteries are being done by Governor Newsom in California and Ohio. He's been seen up on stage like a game show host, spinning a wheel for Vax for the Win. It is coercion. It is coercion to give an incentive to accept an experimental gene therapy. These injections are not FDA-approved or licensed. They're under a fraudulent emergency use authorization, an EUA. In order to approve a gene therapy for emergency use, there must be no other adequate treatment. We know that ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine are exactly that. Typically, injections take seven to 10 years to be approved and licensed. We're still in Phase 3 clinical trials. This is a huge experiment. People aren't being told these things. They are not receiving true informed consent. As of 5/28, there have been 5,165 deaths and 294,801 adverse events that were documented in the VAERS data system. The VAERS data system, HHS did a Harvard study with Harvard, and they found that about only 1% of injuries are actually reported to our VAERS system. So we don't really know, is that a true figure of what we're seeing of deaths and injuries? The PREP Act gives indemnity to the manufacturers, doctors, and nurses. That taxpayer dollars fund a program to pay out any injuries. The manufacturers are completely liability-free, so they are not held to make safe products. And we don't know what the long-term effects are because we haven't had any long-term studies done. Aborted fetal tissue is used for testing and in production. H-E-K 293 aborted fetal tissue cells were used for testing in the Moderna vaccinations and the Pfizer vaccinations. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations use P-E-R-C6 cells for production. Adverse reactions include, but are not limited to, blindness, deafness, blood clots, miscarriages, strokes, anaphylaxis, and cardiovascular disease. Coercion and enticement as a way to secure consent must be stopped. I urge you, please, to vote no on this legislation. Please don't California my Missouri. Thank you so very much.
Our next speaker is Kelly McGowan, followed by Morgan Reed.
I'm Kelly McGowan, and my ZIP code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the Director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity Evolve, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Vying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last summer, this legislative body passed resolutions declaring racism a public health crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African-Americans. This is a great step in the right direction, but how does this translate into action that truly makes an impact? These past few weeks, I have been speaking to the issue of the overabundance of liquor stores in North County. I'm going to pivot my comment this week to discuss something that is related to this concern, the lack of healthier options in full-service grocery stores in North County. Unfortunately, communities in North County are food swamps, meaning they have an overabundance of fast-food restaurants and corner stores selling fried and processed foods, and little to no presence of food retail with nutrient-dense items. This has serious implications for the health and well-being of residents. To address this issue, Evolve will be releasing its Food Audit Toolkit. This toolkit is a resource that supports the community in not only assessing their food environments, but also developing and implementing solutions that benefit community members and business owners when it comes to healthy food retail. Spoiler alert, I will be following up with Chairwoman Days and Councilwoman Webb to formally invite you to the virtual launch of the Food Audit Toolkit. The event will be held via Zoom on Wednesday, June 30, at 6:00 PM. However, all St. Louis County Council members are more than welcome to attend. Evolve is working to improve life expectancy among Black St. Louisans. When North County thrives, St. Louis County wins. Having communities supported with healthy food retail is part of that winning strategy. This effort is going to take all community stakeholders, and Evolve hopes you join us in bringing this vision to a reality. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and hope you can make it on the 30th.
Our next speaker is Morgan Reed, followed by Jason Moore.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Councilmember. My name is Morgan Reed, ZIP code 63130. I am coming to you guys today. I have an issue that's going on in front of my home. Let me start with some history. Me and my husband has been in University City all our life. My family has been there for 40-plus years. We purchased our first home in 2016, and now we have a beautiful baby girl. She's one year old. Long story short, I have a "do not park" sign in front of my home. I also have pictures to better help you guys understand my issue. Safety. If I cannot park in front of my home, I was told to park behind my home. It's a grassy hill. I get my daughter out the car. It's just not safe. And then I was told, park across the street. Well, I live on Midland Boulevard, so it's one-way, south to north, and then you have to cross a huge, medium walkway. So I was told to park across the street. Extremely busy. Basically, I'm just trying to come to a resolution. I was told by the Supervisor of St. Louis County Transportation, sorry for the inconvenience, University City, do not know who put the order in to put the "do not stop" sign, "do not park" sign, sorry. I am okay with the "no parking" sign, but I just need somewhere to park. I do not have a driveway. I live up a hill, if you guys can see. This is the "do not park" sign in the grassy area. They want me to park my car. A better view. My husband is okay with parking behind there with the grassy area, but I'm not because I have my daughter. And this picture here is the picture of my daughter in the car and the busy intersection that they want me to park across the street. When I have groceries, that's the concern. Am I supposed to leave my daughter in the house and hope to run across the street and get back home? In February, sorry, I'm a little nervous. February, my car was stolen in front of my grandmother's house in University City when I was dropping my daughter off. So my biggest issue is safety, and if we could come to some type of resolution with St. Louis County Transportation, I would greatly appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by Reverend Philip Duval.
Excuse me. Jason Moore, 63021. It's good to see you, Dr. Page. Greetings, everybody. I just had a couple of quick things. I wanted to voice my support for Bills 266 and 267 to ensure that we never see again roguish behavior out of the administrative state in St. Louis County, so not a single person or singlety can take down our economy without due course, without due legislative approval from the Council. Secondly, I understand that there's going to be an ask from the Counselor's Office for more funds to expand the amount of counselors that you have in your office. I would recommend no. We've already got enough of a hole with finances. I understand that we're getting a major influx of new money from the government, from the federal government. Let's use it wisely. Personally, I would like to see it go back to the federal government. I don't want to spend other people's monies from other states who have no reason to have their money sitting in our pockets. I think one of the simplest answers to help with the caseloads that your office is receiving is quite simply, don't break the rules, like was done earlier this year. So I would just highly recommend, from my personal opinion, for what it's worth, to please not fund that. to please not fund that. And I guess the last thing is, Dr. Page, again, it's very nice to see you in here. It's the first time I got to see you personally. I would ask that you resign from your position at Mercy Hospital and thereby getting rid of the probe that's going on right now while you're holding down two jobs. It's plainly simple that that's not part of our laws of St. Louis County. And if that is not feasible, then I would ask that you please resign. I know that I've asked that several times over the phone, over the Zoom. We had somebody else last week call for the same thing. So that's all I have to say. Everybody, thanks again for hosting us, and have a pleasant evening.
Our final speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Reverend Philip Duvall.
County Executive Dr. Page, to our Chair and to welcome aboard Councilwoman Webb. Tonight, I'm a bit perplexed. I stand as a citizen, private citizen, that happens to be on the Justice Services Advisory Board. So I'm not speaking as a board member. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen. As a preacher, as a Black man, I've always been in support of fair wages. I've always been in support and will continue to be in support of fair wages and those that are equitable. But I've also matured to know when you're spending tax dollars, we should be very careful how we spend them, when we spend them, and how we will sustain them. I strongly and very strong support of the hard-working men and women that are correctional officers in the Justice Services. They've been underpaid for years. This is not new. So to right the ship and to correct the ship long-term, I personally don't feel it should be subsidized by federal money that runs out. There have been some alternatives that were offered to the current Director as early as December that could have potentially worked some numbers out in the budget that would pay our correctional officers. Why do I stand opposed to middle management? In the Vera Cause group report, it stated that the previous administrator gave increases to middle management. It's on page seven of the Vera Cause report. In addition to that... May I approach just to hand these copies? These individuals received very healthy increases. And that's the middle management that they speak of. Why would we give increases last year of 2020 and stack some more money for these very individuals that, in my humble opinion, are not even doing their job? Why do I make this statement? Because we're suffering over there with a high population and limited... And all I asked was, why don't they pitch in? They're all certified. Why aren't they pitching in to help relieve the overtime and the stress of COs who have children, who have to try to provide security for their family as well in tough situations while these folks sit at home and collect more money?
Would you wrap up, please, very quickly?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's always hard for a preacher to do three minutes.
I know.
So I'll close with this. There's additional information that could be more specific that I'll send electronically to everyone that hopefully, when you see those numbers, you could then understand that this conversation... So I stand opposed to an increase for those other managers, but I do stand in support of COs receiving that increase. Thank you. And Madam Chair, thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is all the speakers.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of those who have come to share your concerns with us. We do take them to heart, and so we'll be moving on. Thank you very much. And the Report of the County Executive is next.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back in the chambers after so many online meetings. It's one of the many indicators that the dark days of the pandemic are nearing an end. More people are getting vaccinated, and the spread of the virus has slowed. However, the virus is still very present in our community. And for those who have not been vaccinated yet, I strongly encourage you to do so. Vaccines are safe and effective and will protect you from getting seriously ill if you contract the virus. They also reduce the risk of you spreading the virus to others. It's also appropriate to stop here and recognize the work of the St. Louis Metropolitan Pandemic Task Force over the past year. They announced yesterday that they would stop holding regular briefings next week. The briefings from the area's four health systems brought together our top medical professionals to work through challenges together and keep a concerned public informed. The task force showed the power of partnership, the value of cooperation, and became a reliable, trusted voice during the pandemic. Task Force will remain in place focusing on early detection of the virus and monitoring the community for spikes in cases. I'd also like to thank Governor Parson. Yesterday, he signed Senate Bill 63, establishing a statewide prescription drug monitoring program. As the governor said at the signing ceremony, this program is long overdue for our state. Missouri was the only state in the Union without a program. St. Louis County launched its own PDMP in April of 2017. And since then, we have expanded our program through partnerships with other jurisdictions in Missouri to cover 85% of the population and 94% of the healthcare providers. County officials have worked diligently to maintain a program that meets the needs of healthcare providers and patients during an ongoing opioid crisis. The Department of Public Health is confident that we'll be able to hand over a robust and effective program to the state. I also like to take time during our meetings to highlight the work of our employees. They are why government works. During the pandemic, county government did not close. We moved to telework when possible and redesigned the lobby of this building to provide multiple services on one floor and restrict traffic in elevators and other offices in other levels. The new county website was launched during the pandemic, and this provided easier and wider access to county services and information. And employees continue to go above and beyond. One of those employees is Jan Schneider. As a member of IT's telecom team, Jan was instrumental in identifying more than $175,000 in cost savings through an audit of all the phone and network connections provided by vendors. Over the years, services have been added that were no longer needed as technology changes. And this auditing process is still ongoing, and we appreciate the effort of Jan and others with the telecom team who are both working to create a more tech-friendly government while saving money along the way. And finally, I'd like to thank the dozens of employees in St. Louis County who are responsible for getting CARES Act funds into the community during this unprecedented time. Earlier today, the council was emailed a detailed presentation highlighting the CARES Act programs put into place and the county's delivery of critical supplies, services, and funds. Unfortunately, technical difficulties forced the cancellation of your committee hearing, but I do hope that that can be rescheduled soon. Our employees had no playbook and ever-changing guidance from the federal government. Yet they stood up programs, worked tirelessly with small businesses, municipalities, nonprofits, and community organizations, got funds out the door. The work was done with oversight from outside compliance and auditing firms to ensure the funds were spent on federally-approved expenses. Thanks again for everyone who took on this heavy lift in responding to the pandemic. I'm proud of our married employees who took those additional duties, put in the extra time, and truly defined what it means to be a public servant. I know the need remains great in our community, and I'm thankful that St. Louis County is set to receive $193 million from President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act. I hope the council quickly approves accepting these funds. We have much work to do in economic recovery while still addressing the basic needs of those who have been impacted by the pandemic. Building off the lessons learned from the pandemic, St. Louis County now has a roadmap that will make us a government built for both the present and the future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Introduction of Bills.
Bill number 157, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $1,575 from youth in need and appropriating same for support of the Family Court Restorative Justice Garden. Bill number 158, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, grant of up to $3,905,646 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein for support of WIOA adult, dislocated worker, and youth programs and services, authorizing transfer of appropriated funds as provided herein, and authorizing the county executive and the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute contracts, agreements, and other necessary documents. Bill number 159, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,836 pertaining to a grant from the United States Department of Health and Human Services for support of the Minority Youth Violence Prevention II St. Louis County Project Restore. Bill number 160, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $315,649 from Missouri Family Health Council Incorporated, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's Title X Family Planning Services Program and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 161, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,692 pertaining to a contract with Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for lease of antenna space on the tower located at 14847 Ladue Bluffs Crossing Drive. Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the amended development in the C-8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, PC 07-21 Jackie Lindsey. Bill number 163, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance amending ordinance number 9130 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2, PC 161-78 Sam Spiesman. Bill number 164, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance in the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the C-2 Shopping District and the C-8 Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for the development in the C-8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, PC 10-21 Telegraph and Tansberger LLC. Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds of up to $192,830,000 from the United States Department of the Treasury as authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, depositing said monies as provided herein and authorizing the county executive and his designees and the accounting officer to execute necessary applications, agreements, and other documents. And bill number 166, introduced by Councilmember Webb, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $875,000 from the unappropriated balance of the ARPA account for support of the Department of Public Health's COVID-19 vaccination incentive program, providing for the expenditure of such funds and authorizing the county executive, the Director of the Department of Public Health, and the Director of Human Services to execute contracts, agreements, and other necessary documents pertaining to said program. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
To perfection. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held. Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held. Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held. Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held. Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77 is held. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88 is held. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 131.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no? No, motion carries. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 131 is perfected. Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days. I move to hold Bill number 139. Bill number 139 is held. Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Yes, so Bill 143 authorizes a supplemental appropriation of $394,832 requested by the Counselor's Office to underwrite the creation of seven additional attorney positions within that office. As you all know, recently, this body failed to pass legislation authorizing the Counselor's Office to hire outside law firms to assist the office in handling specialized litigation and CARES Act matters. This bill, Bill 143, will allow the Counselor's Office to free up its most experienced attorneys to focus on those specialized matters. In addition, Bill 143 includes the creation of two attorney positions dedicated to prosecuting problem property matters. From a context standpoint, the $394,832 represents .0005 of the total St. Louis County budget for 2021, according to the county comptroller, a significantly insignificant amount. In addition, this will result in significant cost savings compared to hiring of outside law firms to handle this work. For instance, a Level 3 attorney in the Counselor's Office earns about $50 an hour, including benefits. By comparison, the county is typically billed at $90-plus per hour for paralegal time with outside law firms. Nonetheless, on tonight's agenda, Bill 147 and 148, if passed, will authorize the hiring of outside counsel for specialized bond refunding matters. Given the foregoing, there is no rational, plausible reason not to perfect Bill 143. If we fail to move and ultimately pass Bill 143, we will have failed in our fiduciary duty to the residents of St. Louis County and send a very clear message that political agendas are more important than good governance. With that, I move to perfect Bill 143.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Chairs in doubt, roll call, please. Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days. No. Councilmember Webb.
No.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
One moment, Madam Chair. Sure. On the motion to perfect Bill number 143, there are four ayes and three noes. Bill number 143 is perfected. Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I move to perfect Bill number 150.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose no? Motion carries. Bill number 150 is perfected. Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
I move to perfect Bill number 151.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number 151 is perfected.
Bill number 152, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 152. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 152 is perfected.
Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 153. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 153 is perfected.
Bill number 154, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 154.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 154 is perfected.
Bill number 155, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill number 155.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 155 is perfected.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Yes, this is a very meaty bill. It's about 30 pages long. I want to give the council time to absorb and have the chance to understand what this bill does and to ask questions. So I invite you all to continue your review of this bill. I would like to take action on it next week, so the sooner the better. You can provide me with your comments would be appreciated. So with that, I will hold Bill number 156.
Bill number 156 is held. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 144, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of Bill number 144.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 144, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 144 is finally passed.
Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 145. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 145, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 145 is finally passed.
Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 146. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 146, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 146 is finally passed.
Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 147. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 147, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 147 is finally passed.
Bill number 148, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number 148. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 148, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 148 is finally passed.
Bill number 149, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of Bill 149.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 149, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 149 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions. I think we have one left.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one resolution remaining this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Days.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Professor Jack Kirkland joined the Brown School of Social Work at Washington University, the Brown School, as an assistant professor in 1970, and shortly thereafter co-founded and chaired what is now known as the Department of African and African-American Studies Program at Washington University. And whereas Professor Kirkland served as Missouri's Director of Transportation for two years, and upon his return to the Brown School, used the lessons he learned in that role about the impact of economic policy on people and communities to found the nation's only concentration in social and economic development, which he chaired for 10 years. And whereas Professor Kirkland's impact on the Brown School and the Washington University community is clear from the many awards he has received, including the Distinguished Faculty Alumni Award, the Dean's Certificate for Excellence in Teaching from the Brown School, and Most Outstanding Teacher, which he has received three times. And whereas Professor Kirkland's impact on our broader community and world is exemplified by his many acts of service, he was the first African-American elected to the University City Board of Education, was a consultant in the school desegregation decree for St. Louis and St. Louis County, has consulted with the Department of Indian Affairs in Washington, and testified before congressional committees, was appointed to the Executive Board of the St. Louis County Economic Council, served as a member of trade commissions to Indonesia and China, has received the prestigious Spirit of Crazy Horse Award, and is a member of the History Makers, a nonprofit research and educational institution committed to preserving and making accessible the untold personal stories of well-known and unsung African-Americans. And whereas, looking back over 50 years of teaching at the Brown School, Professor Kirkland has no doubt shaped policy in the St. Louis County region, both through his own work in the community and through the many students he has inspired. And whereas, when an individual has devoted so much of his life to improving our communities, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause, take note, and express our appreciation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council congratulates Professor Jack Kirkland for his 50 years of teaching at the Brown School, and expresses its deepest appreciation for his dedication to improving our community directly and by inspiring so many others to follow in his footsteps. Section 2, the Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution of Professor Jack Kirkland as a permanent token of the council's gratitude and esteem.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. As a student at the Brown School, I was one of those who was inspired by Professor Kirkland. I know I was not the only one. As another student described, what he does is not so much as about social work as it is about social justice. We're lucky to have him as such an active partner in our region, and it's fitting to mark his 50th year of teaching by recognizing all of the good work that he has done, not just in the university community, but in our region and country. So with that, I move for adoption of resolution number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number 1, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 1 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number 1.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 7th District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number 3.
County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
A moment, Madam Chair. Item number 4.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 6.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order as well. New business.
Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening. Prepared order number 1 in the matter of donation of Bosch crash data retrieval equipment.
I move for adoption of orders number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number 1 is adopted. All right, we have, looks like we've come to the end of the agenda. Is there any comments to be made, Councilwoman Harder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to propose something, and Councilwoman Chair, Days and I have been talking about this, is an idea that I've been knocking around for a little while, and that is that the members of our council maybe could spare time in the next couple of months to team up with another council member and tour their districts and get to know what's going on in other districts, maybe meet with the mayors, see the successes and failures in that area, and try to identify this and get a better understanding. And to do that, I'm going to be the first one to volunteer that our Chairwoman Ms. Days will be attending a mayor's meeting in my district this Friday for breakfast, and then we're going to tour parts of the 7th District to learn a little bit about the 7th District. And then hopefully soon, Chairman, Chairwoman Days will have me go up to her district and meet the mayors and understand the challenges and the successes of that area as well. And I think this would be a good challenge for those here on this council to team up with others and maybe round robin, and over a period of time, all of us will get a chance to learn what the other part of this county looks like and the challenges that we face throughout the county. So I challenge this council to, to team up with somebody and maybe report back eventually how those meetings go in the future. So hopefully you can take me up on my challenge.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to it, Councilwoman Harder.
I am too.
Councilwoman Webb.
Challenge accepted. And I would like to extend that invitation to Councilman Trachis so that he and I can have an opportunity to each other's districts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right. Anyone else, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, I would like to extend an invitation on behalf of our Department of Justice Services to other council members to go tour the Justice Center. Councilwoman Dunaway and I were there this past week with our assistants. Things are pretty fragile over there right now. We do have a, and fragile meaning that while we have seen a decrease in the population to some extent because our prosecuting attorney's office and others have teamed up to implement some innovative diversion programs for our nonviolent offenders, we have seen an increase of folks who are in custody there for violent offenses, and we've also seen a pretty significant decrease in staffing. I do think that the pay raise is a part of the puzzle here, and I am concerned that we're not acting as a body with enough urgency to address that. We do have a hearing in a couple of weeks, but I've noticed that lots of other hearings have been scheduled prior to that, and I think that that should be escalated and perhaps that hearing should be moved up. We did receive a public comment tonight related to this legislation, and I don't know that it's important so much. So I don't know that what's most important is where this money comes from, but that we find this money to give the corrections officers a pay raise. And that's, again, a conversation that should be escalated, and I invite the rest of the council to go and see with their own eyes what the corrections officers and what the residents are dealing with over there right now. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? And thank you, Councilwoman Clancy, for that. I have visited the Justice Center. I am also looking for the review that has been requested, the top-down review from the Justice Center, to see exactly what some outside person sees and looks at that as well. So I think your point is well taken. We have a lot of things that we have to look at in conjunction with the Justice Services, and so I appreciate that. Anything else for the greater good, Councilwoman Webb?
Madam Chair, thank you. Chantae just reminded me, there is a Justice Health and Welfare Committee meeting on this Thursday, and so I want to make sure that everybody is aware and that they have an opportunity to participate.
Thank you. Anything else for the good, for the greater good? Councilwoman Harder?
Yes, just to remind the council, we, next week, we will be interviewing for a new auditor, and Ann has sent out notices to those that want to participate in that first round of interviews. It'll be a round-robin type of quick interview. We have seven candidates that we'd like to talk to and narrow that down to, say, three. So hopefully, everybody here can participate in some fashion so that we can move forward to finding a new auditor, hopefully, very soon.